Good evening. Welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, December 10, 2019.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'll call the meeting to order. I'm pleased to welcome Cub Scout PAC 913 from St. Joseph's Catholic Church to come forward and lead us in the pledge. And we had a wonderful meeting with them before the council, before the council meeting, where they asked us all sorts of great questions, and we're so glad that you guys came. So if you would come on down, we would follow your lead for the Pledge of Allegiance. And they are working toward their Arrow of Light rank.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so this is our last public hearing of the 2019 calendar year, so we made it, guys. We have three sets of minutes up for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve the October 29 public hearing minutes?
Sumoed.
All those in favor, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the November 6 work session minutes?
Sumoed.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And is there a motion to approve the November 12 public hearing minutes?
Sumoed. Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I will abstain, being that I was out of town for work.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion carries. Tonight, we have a presentation, which is the presentation of the town's comprehensive annual financial report. And I will recognize our Director of Finance, Jenny Tripoli, who will introduce our consultants from Brown, Edwards &amp; Company to present the CAFRA. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We're starting off tonight with a bang. We're starting with the FY 2019 audit. I'd like to introduce Matt Heatwall. He is the main in-charge manager on our engagement and has been for the last three years now.
Thanks, Jenny. And like Jenny said, Matt Heatwall, Director from Brown, Edwards &amp; Company, happy to be here again.
Welcome.
Want to thank the council and management for the opportunity to serve Herndon.
We don't think your microphone's on, sir.
Button locked.
Sorry, that's our fault, not yours. Sorry about that, thank you.
Sometimes I can talk loud enough.
It's for the TV feed. We could hear you just fine, yeah.
But again, want to show our appreciation to both the council and management for the opportunity to serve the town. We have a great working relationship, really appreciative of Jenny and Jerry and their staff working with us throughout the audit. We begin the audit back in May, pretty early in the year, and it continues throughout the summer and into the fall, and kind of concludes with this meeting here today. So again, thank you, Jenny. Please tell Jerry thank you as well.
Definitely.
And your staff. The CAFRA itself, which I'm sure everybody has read, is, really goes above and beyond basic financial statements. It includes a letter of transmittal to everyone, a management's discussion and analysis, one of the best we see in our locality, so kudos to you and your staff on that, very comprehensive. Includes the basic financial statements, notes and disclosures, statistical information, and also some other information. And it's a great CAFRA. The town also applies for and receives what's called the GFOA certificate of financial achievement. The town received that in 2018 and will apply again for this year's CAFRA for 2019, and I'm sure will pass with flying colors. So the reason we're here, to discuss the audit opinion. The audit opinion is included in the CAFRA, I think about 20 pages in. We are expressing an unmodified or clean audit opinion on the CAFRA. Basically means, based on our audit, we believe the financial statements are free of material misstatement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It's the highest opinion a locality can receive. In addition to that letter, in the CAFRA itself, there's a report in the back of the CAFRA called our Yellow Book Opinion. It's not an opinion on internal controls, but if there were major significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted in internal controls or compliance, they would be disclosed there. Happy to report there are none in that report. What I'll do, in comparison, and to be consistent with prior years, we put a report together called a financial analysis, and it's a number of charts and graphs based on the CAFRA itself, some high-level financial information, but nonetheless important ratios derived from there that I'll cover tonight. The first one is called our Level of Net Position, and it's in relation to the second one, Changes in Net Position. Kind of gives an overall picture of the town. Net Position really represents what we think of as our equity. It's all our assets minus our liabilities, minus, plus deferred outflows, minus deferred outflows, a lot of accounting lingo, but it kind of gives, like I said, an overall financial condition of the town. There was growth in net position from last year, and an overall favorable trends, some increases in tax revenues, and also charges for services contributed to that increase. The next slide, Budgetary Fund Balance. Important numbers here. Of course, we're always looking at our unassigned fund balance to determine, what do we have to fund our future expenditures? Very strong percentages here, you know, in 29%, 30%. GFOA actually recommends two months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance, and the town is currently at 3.52, so very strong percentages there. And also, there are a number of fund balance amounts assigned as well, I believe, for capital expenditures and some other items, too. So again, very strong position there. The next slide, Assets to Liabilities, kind of gives a picture of the overall equity the town has. How leveraged is the town? During 2019, those amount, those percentages did decrease a little bit, but there were two significant debt issuances, both for governmental activities and business-type activities. So again, very strong net position and ratio here, just we have to issue debt to fund projects. That's how governments work, so. Next slide is our Quick Ratio, gives an analysis of, do we have the assets to pay down our current liabilities? So when we think of quick assets, we think of cash, accounts receivable and so forth. Do we have enough in the bank, so to speak, to pay our upcoming obligations, whether they be accounts payable, debt obligations? So again, a very strong here. What you want is really a two-to-one ratio here, and the town has exceeded that, both in governmental activities and business-type activities. Slides nine and 10 go over what we call Capital Asset Condition. It's an analysis of our categories of capital assets for both governmental activities and business-type activities. Gives a picture of how much life is left in those capital assets. If we had anything here, really low percentages on some of the larger assets. It may be time to reinvest or put resources into the infrastructure, equipment and so forth. Very positive trends here. As a part of our audit, it's a big audit area for us, testing there, so we know there are a lot of additions year to year that we look at. So the town has continued significant investment in its capital assets. On the business-type activities, you'll notice a pretty big increase in intangible assets. That's due to buying future capacity from Fairfax Water in 2019. Slides 11 and 12 deal with debt service load. Again, this is an analysis of how much we're spending on our debt service compared to other expenditures. Pretty low percentages here, honestly, for the town, and pretty consistent. Again, we issued debt this year, so some of those percentages increased a little bit, but overall, pretty small percentages for the town. Let's go to the next slide, actually. Other local taxes, Grove. Kind of gives a picture of the overall activity in the town for the year. The town, of course, has business license revenue, transient taxes, among other things, sales taxes, and business license revenue was down a bit, although Jenny let me know it did meet budget this year, which is great. All other taxes either exceeded amounts from the previous year or were consistent year to year. Let's see, and let's actually go to the last slide, which I think is Service per Capita. This is just an analysis of all the town's functions. Of course, the most, arguably the most important ones, police and public works, are continuing to be the highest here, no major changes in those categories. There are two other deliverables we've given to management and, I believe, to council as well. One is our yearly management letter, which discusses any internal control suggestions. That is included, I think, in your packets. Management has always been open to, with us, in discussing items and making improvements on those. Like I said, no major findings there, just some best-practice suggestions. The other final deliverable we had for the council specifically was our Board Governance Letter. Kind of gives an overall picture of how the audit went, some significant details on significant estimates in the financial statements themselves. If there were any major disagreements, those would be disclosed there. Happy to report there are none of those. And also, as a part of that letter, one important thing for council to remember is, we attach what are called management representations to that letter at the end of our audit in the wrap-up stage. That's kind of our last piece of audit evidence. We were requesting representations from management regarding amounts in the financial statements and information they provided us. But again, we think it's important for those charged with governance to read that letter and understand they are making representations to us. Happy to take any questions on anything.
Certainly. Well, I just want to thank you for taking the time to be here. I feel like you were just here. Time is flying, so I appreciate your time. Are there questions or comments from the council? Mr. McKenna?
Just one, and maybe Jenny might answer it more than you, but I think one thing that some people don't see here, and I think it's important with the debt obligations that we've received, debt's at an all-time low. And I think if we had it compared to the CPI, if we pegged that to, because you can compare it to inflation, but that doesn't mean BUPKIS in regards to the Consumer Price Index. I think the debt ratio is a little bit misgiving, because I think, based upon the debt that we have and the CPI, we might actually have a negative outcome, meaning we'd actually, based upon the projection, we would actually make out on that. Would that be correct?
Possibly, yeah. And that's something we could look at as a presentation item, too.
I think that would be a good thing for people to look at, because I do think that inflation or the CPI will increase next year because of tariffs and some other miscellaneous things that will make the cost of living go up. However, with having that debt ratio, I think that will stabilize a lot of things, so thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Anybody? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the report, by the way. Just because it's in the statement, what's our exposure for not having included or audited the information for the report, year ending June 2015?
As far as that statistical information?
Yes. Well, you made the statement in your certified.
Oh, in the graphs here.
Correct.
I'm sorry. That's something we can do. We typically do about four years of information. This report is really just a presentation-type item, that's all it really is, but we're happy to include as many years as you'd like for comparison purposes.
The significance is that Brown Edwards wasn't our audit firm at that point, so they're including the numbers, but they didn't audit them. But we did have a clean opinion that year, too. It was just from a different firm. So it's just a caveat that, hey, these numbers are in this presentation, but they've attested to 16, 17, 18, 19, but not 15.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Are other localities in a similar position in Northern Virginia, or are we in any way standing out in the middle of the field?
I think one of the strengths here is your unassigned fund balance, honestly. It's a very high amount, very stable amount. And like I said, not only that, but you have amounts already committed for future years, too. I think that's one of the things to patch your back on, very smart spending and smart policies, too. I think you have a policy of 10% of expenses.
It's 20.
20. So very, you know, very strong there, meeting that percentage. No concerns that we can see from that perspective.
And our Quick Ratio is apparently better than usual. What is our Quick Ratio? It's not two-to-one?
It's, I believe it was three points.
Three and a half? That was the 3.52%?
Yeah, three and a half. And again, that's, you usually want two-to-one at a minimum, so the fact that it's higher than that is great.
Thank you.
Good ratios.
And thanks for the report.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Or comments?
Sure. So thank you for doing the report. Thank you to Jenny and your team for continuing to have such a well-run, this is such an important part, right, of our, for our town and for our taxpayers. So just, the only question would be, are there any places of exposure? I mean, this all sounds really great and rosy, so are there any things that we should be concerned about? I know, I'm thrilled to hear that ours continues to be great and solid, and that certainly compared to other jurisdictions, both in Northern Virginia and what we see when we go throughout the state, when we go to a conference in the state, we've all talked about the fact that we do feel really confident with how this is run. But are there any things you would just highlight for us, or things to just be thinking about?
Sure. I mean, from a financial perspective, I think the town is in outstanding position. One thing that's on the top of our minds that we are talking with our clients about is just cybersecurity risks. I mean, and that's every industry, but governments are being targeted for that as well. That's something that, you know, you pull up Google or the city of Atlanta, and there is exposure out there for that. I mean, that's one thing that we look at, although I know the town here has a good disaster recovery plan in place, certain measures are taken, but something always to keep on top of folks' mind is important to us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, and thank you again for your report. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Jenny, did you have anything else for us?
No, that's it.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Over the Thanksgiving holiday, we had moved some routes because of the Thanksgiving holiday, and it was moved because of our recent route changes. We had to do things a little.
For trash and?
Correct. Trash route changes. We had to do things a little differently, and we received several complaints as a response, because they did not get the word of the changed refuse or recycling days. One of the main drivers behind it seemed to be that we moved some of these things forward instead of backwards. This was mainly born out of a decision where we, if we would have pushed them back, we would not have been able to get the trucks to the transfer station in time before closed, emptying them out for the next day. So that would put the next day behind, and so on and so forth. So we moved some of the days forward. Over the Christmas and New Year's holidays, we are going to do something very similar again. We are, because of that transfer station issue, we want to make sure we do that. So with that, we are reaching out directly to homeowners associations to help get the word out. We are including a new news release, news you can use, the website, Facebook and Twitter, all will have this information put out. We're going to keep the signs out on the roads, reminding people to check the town's website for schedule changes. And we have a dedicated trash recycling service phone line, so if it gets missed, call in, and that's going to be publicized as well. And we also believe that because of the change, there'd be fewer impacts this time than last, than Thanksgiving, on these next two holidays coming up. And we're doing some other things behind the scenes to try to make that a little bit more palatable. I don't expect it to be perfect, but we are certainly striving to make it at least better than the Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start us off for comments? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, just a couple things. First, the Herndon Holiday Model Train Show will be December 14th and 15th this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Municipal Center here, the WOD Caboose and the Herndon Depot Museum. Also want to take this time to wish happy holidays to everyone in the audience, to the staff, to council and the mayor. You know, this is a time to be grateful, but also, it's a time for a lot of people that have difficulties. Couple things, you know, just some of the things you can do, for example, with some military families that use layaways for different kinds of gifts. You know, people use military IDs for that, pay them off. I don't think a military family should have to worry about Santa's going to visit. And another thing, too, for students or people who are active in the school system, there's a lot of kids who have reduced their free lunch, or sometimes they get debts and bills. See what they are, pay them off, if you can do that, because no kid should go hungry, and no kid should have to worry about where their next meal's coming from. So just keep that in mind for the holiday season. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Friedrichs?
I, too, would like to wish everybody whatever happy holiday you celebrate. There are so many coming up. We can't really name them all, but definitely Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Festivus, New Year's. I also want to mention that last week, I had the opportunity to go to the Herndon Elementary School Parent Resource Night and spent some time introducing myself to parents, some of whom turned out to be new to town, which was very cool. And our HPD was there, making sure that they created a relationship with those families, too, and that was a beautiful thing to see. And last week, we had a very cool meeting with the town council and the HPRB, the Historic Preservation Review Board, met together to chat about the new guidelines that are coming up, and I think we're all very optimistic and excited and hopeful and all those good things. I'm looking forward to this weekend, Reefs Across America, the Winter Market, and hearing the Herndon High School Band Play. And last weekend, had the great opportunity to volunteer as a docent at the Herndon Homes Tour for a new, somebody who'd newly moved to town, and that was very, very cool. She's a musician, she had a harpsichord in her main area, so of course, you know, I was pretty excited. But as I say, wishing you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Thank you to all the staff for everything they've done this year. It has been an amazing year, and they have worked so hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. DeLaGuella?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Basically, everything that was said. But I do want to ask that the folks that did stop and chat with, on that joint HPRB Town Council Work Session, please send in your comments via email. We'll certainly do our best to communicate the spirits of what you were saying. So all those folks listening out there, please get those in. We definitely want to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Sure. Yes, I'll just add, also regarding the Homes Tour, so thank you for that committee and all the folks that volunteered to put their house on the tour. Many of us on the dais have been on that and know how hard that is. I was also a docent, and it's one of my favorite days of the year. I just think it's a great spirit of Herndon on the Homes Tour Day. And of course, the tree lighting at 5:00, so thanks to our Chamber of Commerce for helping with that, and to our DPW staff for working extra hard. Make sure you spend some time downtown. We have the music now pumping through from the grant with Vivacity. It sounds super cool. And thanks also to the Women's Club for the Craft Fair on Sunday, if some of you went to that. And of course, this Saturday, it's been mentioned, but this Saturday at noon, so December 14th at noon, start your day at the Chestnut Grove Cemetery for the Reefs Across America. We have over 800 veterans in our Chestnut Grove Cemetery. You don't have to go to Arlington to commemorate and to honor our veterans. We can do it right here in Herndon. And of course, the Winter Market from 12 to 8, again sponsored by the Dulles Chamber, and lots of help and support from our friends and neighbors who have German history, German connections, or just a love for adding a new event in town. And then, of course, the Train Show, 10 to 4 both days, so lots going on. Look forward to a wonderful season and see you all back in January. Thank you. Mr. DeCall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I agree with everything that has been said here. Last week, I had a great privilege to attend DADA, Dulles Area Transportation Association's Annual Meeting. It went well, and our council member, DeLaGuella, and Vice Mayor Olum was also there, and Vice Mayor Olum actually gave a presentation on our Herndon Metro Plan and the other activities, development activities surrounding the Metro Rail, which was pretty good. Another thing is, I agree with Councilmember DeLaGuella on HPRB. Last week, we had a great work session, and whether you live in Heritage District or not, whether you live in the contributing house or not, please make sure you send us comments, because this is the right time, because we are forming or updating the HPRB guidelines, and your comments and your feedbacks will be very important for us on that one. And last, but not the least, I would like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year in advance. And I am about to conclude my first year as a council member, and I'm very thankful to everybody, and I really enjoyed a lot, learned a lot, and at the same time, was part of great decisions here. Thank you to all the council members as well, and to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did I get that on?
Nope. Is it not coming on?
I think we have no.
We might have a problem. Okay, I didn't do this to you, Sheila. Okay, her mic is not working. You want to lean over, use this one?
My mic's not working. I'll scoot over. I'll share.
Sharing is sharing.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for sharing your microphone. I just want to say that I had comments from several people who were very impressed with the signage that was put out by the Department of Public Works in the town on the trash pickup. So I just want you to pass that on, and for yourself and the department heads, that there were a lot of people that saw that. Now, a lot of people might not be driving down the streets where those signs were, but I've noticed they've updated them for the upcoming holidays. So thank you. And also, I participated in the Home Tour as well, and I was a docent for the Rotary House, as myself and the council member Friedrichs are members of Rotary, and that was really nice. That was a brand-new house. They moved in last year during the Herndon Home Tour when it was pouring down rain, so those poor people were moving into that house during the rain, and this year, we had a nice day for everyone to come around and tour. So they really have done a lot of work on that house, who have only been there a year. Also, if you are concerned about folks needing some food and other items during the holidays, I'll be at the Safeway with the Herndon Rotary between 1:00 and 2:00, but we'll have people there most of the day. And we'll actually have you a list of things that people need in the community, and we'll just give you a shopping list, and you can pick it up and bring it out and put it in a bag. We also will have people show up with other items and put them in the bags, and then we take them over to the appropriate places, like the Rutgers Center over in Reston, and other folks link that helps with the food in the Herndon area for our students and families. And I'd also like to say, happy holidays to everyone, and Happy New Year, because this is it for the rest of the year. But stop by the Winter Market. I'm sure I'll be down there most of the day, and then I'll be at Safeway from 1:00 to 3:00, collecting with the Herndon Rotary, Saturday, 1:00 to 3:00.
Vice Mayor's a busy lady. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that the town offices will be closing at noon on Tuesday, December 24th, and all day Wednesday, December 25th, and all day Wednesday, January 1st for those holidays. You can visit the town's website for updated information on the refuse collection, and I concur with the Vice Mayor, I think that there's a lot of outreach. I think there's a lot of confusion this time, because we're all just getting used to the new schedule that we started back in August. You know, you don't realize how ingrained your trash day is in your head until it's different. So anyway, I think it'll go more smoothly as time goes on, and I appreciate all the outreach that you guys are doing. I wanted to note that the monitors up here, you'll notice they're black tonight. There's a repair that's in place, it should be back up and running for our next meeting, but it does not impact our viewers at home, they are able to see the monitors. And I wanted to let you all know that we just got these on the dais tonight, the new town calendar and the events guide, so those will be hitting your mailboxes shortly. And that brings us to the comments from the audience portion of the agenda. I wanted to let you all know that the Clerk's Office does have a wireless microphone available for anyone in the audience that may have trouble getting to the podium, and maybe after the comments, the Vice Mayor could use that. I don't know if that would work, but since her microphone isn't working. But I'm still happy to share, if they won't bring you one. So this is comments from the audience. This is the time to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. This is, would include any item that's on your mind, in addition to the items on our consent agenda and the general agenda. Yes, ma'am? Come on down. Yes, I'm talking to you? Thanks. Nice to see you.
You may all probably know me, because I used to sell with racist pastries, and this is not a plug, at the farmer's market, so if I look familiar, that's why. Okay, so, Madam Mayor, Council, I am Diane Weiss. I am at 706 Morningside Court, Herndon, Virginia. I've lived in the area now for almost 30 years. I am a former elected member of the Four Seasons Rec Association, and I have come with a concern. Okay. So, background information, in 2017, there was a public hearing, which unfortunately, I didn't take seriously. This is in regard not to Item 14 of the agenda, which is the metro station at Herndon Monroe, but has to do with the Innovation Station, and specifically, the path that I believe had been approved, although I'm still doing research to find out what it is. There should be an adjoining path from basically where I live at Four Seasons to Reflection to hook into the bike pedestrian path to the new upcoming Innovation Station. And there is a, I found out when I was delivering the newsletters a week ago, that Four Seasons, after I left the council, has decided to put up a tall fence to block access from Four Seasons to Reflection. The additional issue is that Herndon Town has a sewer, and it dumps into this thing into Fairfax County, but has been used. Now, I became a Pokemon Go player, and so I started hiking Herndon. You might have seen me all over. I hike Herndon. Okay? And I love hiking Herndon. And one of the things that I've learned to hike is to the Innovation Station, back through the woods, through Reflection, out the side into Green Terrace, Dulles Green. I also found out you can go up Partridge. There's a fence with a hole in it that provides public access to get to Innovation from there. That's not really a good idea. There should be, in my opinion, there should be public access, and I have been trying to deal with the Fairfax County Transportation Status Report. This document unfortunately is impenetrable. It's 40-some pages without internal links to get to where it is. I have tried to make contact with Lauren Del Mar, who is the contact at Fairfax County. I am still working my end of it, but my proposal, I know I'm trying to wrap up...
Thank you.
...is that the town of Herndon, in my opinion, should put in an easement for both water control and access, so that the public pathway from Four Seasons to Reflection can be a reality.
Thank you. Would you make sure that the clerk has your contact information, so we can follow up with you?
I emailed her, so...
Okay, so we have that. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I was unaware of that. Okay, thank you. We will be in touch. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. When the red light comes on, please wrap up.
My name is Alexandra Burke. I live at 910 Georges Place, Apartment 304 in Herndon, the Harbor House. And the last time I stood up here and talked to the, to our meeting tonight or two, I was talking about the dawn town development of 270 new apartments or two. And last time, I mentioned for 10% for the poor, and I'd like to see at least 5% for the senior citizens or the baby boomers to have a place to live there, too. And I'd like very much to point out, the land is the town of Herndon and Fairfax County. I am asking you people to note on December the 10th, 2019, the mayor and the town council, do you people will help the citizens of the people of Herndon? We are 24,000 people. You are our elected officials. Please make a statement, of you people, to the people of Herndon. The seniors and older people do need help, and it would help them a great deal. This is what I'm asking for.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Yes, ma'am?
Aunt Beta, 631 Oak Street. I'm concerned that the town is forcing us, forcing citizens to FOIA to receive answers. Many of my emails, I have to send second and third requests. Most recently, my most recent second request had a couple of pretty straightforward questions that don't require, that shouldn't require a FOIA, and really shouldn't require too much to answer if they're delegated to the correct staff member. I've been talking about the two failed structures on Florence Place for months and months. I mean, are you going to wait until they fall on a kid? I mean, what does it take to get a response? There's a tree that has had multiple calls from multiple people on the street, and they're insurers. You know, I think we deserve a response. The, I asked about the new architectural surveys. I mean, the consultants know the answer to that. Delegate that question to them, and it shouldn't take, you know, weeks or whatever to get an answer. The surveys were planned and designed well in advance. That should be a cut and paste to respond to that. Again, I just really think that simple questions should be simple to answer and shouldn't require a FOIA. On another topic, the holiday tour of homes was lovely. It was gorgeous. It was beautiful. Clearly, these homeowners performed a labor of love. They devoted time, talent, and treasure to these heritage structures, and we all benefit from their efforts. This passion for restoring heritage homes is quite independent of zillow guesstimates and county tax assessments. The return on investment is not financial. It's still a wonderful return, and we all benefit from it. But of the 200 structures, there are some structures and some owners that might not merit such passion, such devotion, and such investment in time, talent, and treasure, yet they are still hearth and home to us. And, you know, citizens in good standing ask, respectfully request, that you release us from the bonds of heritage burdens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not one of our public hearing items? Yes, ma'am? Come on down.
These are falling off tonight. All right, Happy Holidays. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council Members. I'm Barbara Glak, at 935 Barton Oaks Place, and I'm here as a homeowner from the Dunbarton Square Homeowners Association. There is a dangerous intersection in our neighborhood, the intersection of Barton Oaks Place and Ferndale Avenue. As we drive out of our neighborhood, heading west on Barton Oaks, we come to a stop sign at Ferndale. The problem is that this is a blind intersection. It's very dangerous to make a left-hand turn onto Ferndale. It is blind, because there's a rising hill on Ferndale, so we can't see the cars that might be coming over the hill from our right, and because cars tend to park along Ferndale close to that corner, blocking our line of sight and visibility. The combination of the hill and the parked cars makes turning left out of our intersection very dangerous. We cannot always see the cars that are approaching over the hill, requiring us to inch up far into the intersection. Oftentimes, we either have to gun it, hoping nobody is coming, or we have to slam on our brakes and back up if somebody is coming, assuming we can, nobody's behind us when we back up. This visibility problem is exacerbated at night for two reasons. One, because visibility is naturally worse at night, because it's dark, and because the number of cars that are parked close to this corner is even greater at night, because people are home from work in the evening and park closely along that corner there. Some of my neighbors and my HOA board have told me that they have contacted the town over the years, asking them for help with this situation to no avail. And as far as... at night. One neighbor told me that a council member told them that a study might be done. I would imagine that the Herndon Police or DPW might want to evaluate how many accidents may have taken place at this intersection. I don't know how many accidents may or may not have occurred here, but I do know that there have been a lot of almost accidents there, and I contest to that personally, myself. I've lived in this neighborhood for many years, and I've had a number of close calls. For the record, I've always opposed the practice of waiting for a certain amount of accidents to occur at an intersection, at an obviously unsafe intersection, before government intervenes to take, to put in place any type of controls there. Everyone in my neighborhood knows this is a dangerous intersection. So, the hill cannot be fixed. What I'm asking you to do is to install a "No Parking From Here to Corner" sign at the northeast corner of Ferndale and Barton Oaks Place, to prevent cars from parking too close to that corner, in order to make our line of sight better. I would not be here speaking to you tonight if I didn't think this was an unsafe area. I'm not asking for much. I'm not asking for you to reconfigure the road or add a traffic signal. I'm just asking for a sign, a "No Parking From Here to the Corner" sign. So, this picture here is when I'm on Barton Oaks, facing Ferndale. I'm at the stop sign there, and you can see the cars parked there along the right. So, it's hard to see who's coming up from over that hill. Here's me inching up a little closer. Again, I start inching up into the intersection. Still, I can't see who's coming from the right. And then, here's, you see, a car appears. So, couldn't see them coming from up over the hill. That's why this is so dangerous. So, I'm hoping a sign can be placed there. There is a "No Parking From Here to Corner" sign at Park Avenue, but not at our street, and ours is a lot more blind. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our staff is taking note.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing, to include general and consent agenda items? Okay, thank you very much. So, that brings us to our first public hearing, which is ordinance 19043, to consider zoning ordinance text amendment 1803, to amend Chapter 78 zoning, to permit and establish limitations on short-term rentals as an accessory use to residential dwelling units. We, I'm going to open the public hearing, and before we get started, I will call for disclosures, and I do have one. For the record, my family owns a rental home in California, and although this matter before us may not have applications solely to property or business in which I have a personal interest, I do plan to recuse myself and disqualify myself from presiding and voting on this transaction. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney. Are there other disclosures of council? I don't believe there are. Okay, so, before I pass the gavel, do we have a microphone situation for the Vice Mayor? I mean, she's welcome to use mine, but I wanted to check on that. Okay, perfect. So, with that, I will pass the gavel to the Vice Mayor. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, all the comments that we've received have been entered into the record, and I want to recognize our zoning administrator, David Strong Burke, for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Olm, and members of council. So, as stated, this is Zoda Number 18-03, which is a zoning text amendment for short-term rentals. So, the purpose behind this amendment came partially from the rapid growth of the sharing economy, specifically lodging through platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO, as well as changes made by the General Assembly in 2017. And so, they passed legislation in 2017 that led to Virginia Code 15.2-983. Staff had prepared amendments to the town code in the spring in 2018 as a result of that, and that was to adopt a short-term rental registry. And in June of 2018, Town Council passed an initiating resolution to allow staff to go forward and develop zoning regulations for short-term rentals. And the zoning language is intended to work in concert with the short-term rental registry. Short-term rentals are currently undefined and unregulated by the zoning ordinance. So, by defining the use and adopting a comprehensive set of regulations, it allows the good actors to come in, obtain their permits, and operate these with a sense of predictability, but it also gives the inspectors the tools they need to go after anyone who might be operating these in a way that's not a benefit to the community. So, staff has been fine-tuning the language with the Planning Commission over the past 18 months, through a number of work sessions and public hearings and comments that have been submitted to the staff and the Planning Commission. So, in running through some of the provisions, one of the important ones we have is that any operator of a short-term rental actually has to reside at that location. And so, for the purpose of the ordinance, that means you resided at that location for seven of the 12 previous months. And the intent of this is really to try and prevent investors from coming up, buying a number of different properties, and essentially turning them into hotels in the middle of the neighborhood. If the operator is not the property owner, you can be a long-term renter, as long as you, again, meet the residency requirement. But if you're not the actual owner, then you do have to get written authorization from the property owner, as well as meeting the residency requirement, when you come in and apply for these. If the property is part of either a homeowners' association or a condo association, then you do also have to submit proof that you've notified them of your intent to operate a short-term rental within the association boundaries. The proposal does include a maximum number of nights where you can do a short-term rental under some circumstances. So, the proposal is to limit it to 90 nights, where an operator could rent out the entire structure. So, again, this would be if your whole family is gone, and you just put your entire house up for rent. It's 90 nights per year. If you typically only rent out a room in your house every once in a while, there are no limit on the number of nights for that type of rental. And some of the localities each kind of take a different approach to this. Fairfax County does not distinguish between if you're renting out your entire house, or if you're there and renting it out. They do a flat max of 60 nights per year. Loudoun County, these are draft for Loudoun, but they are taking a similar approach, where it's 180 total nights. The Herndon proposal is more similar to the Arlington County proposal and Montgomery County, where again, where you distinguish between renting out the entire house versus if you're just renting out a room every once in a while within your structure. The proposal also limits the total maximum number of adults during any rental period to six adults. And an important part of that is, all of the renters have to be under one contract. So, if you're running out, again, to a family or a group of people, you can have up to six people during that rental period, but again, they all have to be on one group. If you are a pair of adults, and you have your adult parents living with you, so a total of four adults in the house, and you plan to rent out a room, then the most you could ever do would be two, because you can never exceed six at any one time during a rental period. There are also limits on the parking for any short-term rental. You have to provide your parking on-site, so that's either in a private garage or in the driveway, in the example of a single-family house, or for a condo or a townhouse, it has to be your space that's either deeded to you or otherwise reserved and dedicated for you. For single families, it's two spaces. That's both a minimum and a maximum. So, again, you have to demonstrate that you can accommodate those two vehicle spaces. But during any rental period, you can't have any more than two vehicles on that property that aren't registered to the property. So, again, that kind of helps enforce and keep it where it's all as part of one group, and not to multiple different individuals that you could be running to, to get to that number of six. And it's the same for townhouses and condos, except it's just one vehicle is the minimum and the maximum. Any type of events are prohibited during a rental period. The intent of this is to keep a rental from being essentially a party house. That's been a problem specifically in California. I know some of the companies are trying harder to crack down on this, but it is also in the ordinance, you have to put that in your advertisement, that you cannot have parties there. And that's another thing that we're going to be looking for as staff. There are certain safety elements you have to add to this. So, you have to have fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and if there are any gas appliances, a carbon monoxide detector in there as well. So, as I mentioned, a permit will be required. That's when you will provide all of the necessary documents to the staff, where we will evaluate it. There is an initial inspection that will occur after staff signs off on it, and those permits are good for a two-year period. And then, like most other items where you get a permit for, staff can re-inspect if we receive a complaint, or if the inspector notices something that is concerning. And as I had mentioned... And as I had mentioned previously, there is a town code amendment that's intended to go with this, that's the short-term rental registry. If you're operating a short-term rental and you're not on the registry, then that does carry a $500 violation with it for failure to register. So the staff is recommending that the council approve this zoning ordinance text amendment. And we are also recommending the plant, what the Planning Commission had stated in their resolution, that the council direct staff to reevaluate this amendment after it's been in effect for 24 months, just so we can see if there are any problems, if the language needs to be changed, if perhaps it was too strict, it needs to be let back, just to really see how things have functioned over that period and see if we need to make any changes to that ordinance. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Pradee?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Great presentation, thank you. Just wanted to make sure, so if the owner or the resident is present and wants to go for short-term rental for the basement or any bedroom, then the 90 days restriction does not come into picture, right? If the owner is present or whoever the primary resident is present in that house.
That's correct. The 90 days is for if you want to rent out your entire house.
Entire house and you go for vacation or whatever the reason, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, first, I wanted to clarify, and another one we actually asked in the work session as well, but for the record, I wanted to ask again. So that maximum number of six actually combines with the number of residents who are already living in the house. For example, two people live in the house, then if they want to go for short-term rental, then only they can allow four more, and those four more should come with one rental agreement, not two.
That's exactly correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Councilmember Baker.
Yes, so I missed the work session, but I did listen to it, so appreciated the discussion. Just a few additional questions that I don't think were asked. So as I read through it, it says the primary resident, of course, is the one that has to apply and has to live there for seven months, but doesn't have to be the owner of the property, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And in that case, is the owner notified? Like, do we look at the deed and make sure the owner is notified?
They have to provide authorization from the owner. That's, we wouldn't approve their application unless they provide evidence of that.
Okay, great, thank you. And then regarding the one contract, the up to six people, the potentially one contract, but can they do two separate rentals within their house? Is that possible to have?
No, not during a short term. You can only do one rental. And again, the people, as long as you meet the people requirement of that, but it all needs to be under one contract. So again, if you had, let's say, three adults, you couldn't rent to a couple, so two, and then another single person for three to get up to that six, you wouldn't be able to do that.
No, so the scenario I'm thinking of, and just, I don't, I didn't see where it was clearly stated, so just, let's say, you're out of your house, right? So you're using the, you're renting your entire house. Can you rent that to two separate, via two separate contracts?
No, it's still one contract.
So it is stipulated in there that it does have to be one contract?
Yes.
Okay. I get the six people, I understand that, but just wanted to clarify the contract part. And then regarding the no events, so certainly understand that and appreciate that, you know, that's not the intent of what we're looking for. However, it feels like there's some subjectivity to that, right? So let's say someone is using this rental because there is an event in town and they have, there's a bunch of family members or whatever that do live in town, so how restrictive are we on that, right? So let's say someone rents a house and there's six adults in that house, but they, and kids, right? But they have family members and friends in town, and then they come there. I mean, what's considered an event?
Again, that's always a bit tricky. Really, the biggest part with that is you're going to see that on a recurring basis. If somebody is trying to use, rent a place out specifically for parties, then one, it's going to be advertised for that, and you'll have complaints coming in on a regular basis. Because even the first time of something, you know, happens there, people are going to be calling the police, they're not going to be calling the zoning inspectors to go out. So it's really on that recurring basis where you can tell that something is being rented out purposely for having parties there.
And it's going to be written, once the homeowner registers with us and says they want to use their property this way, they have to state in their ads on Airbnb or whatever that they, that the renters won't use it for events.
Yeah, I mean, the ads on Airbnb, Airbnb at least, already say that whether or not you can have parties there, it's just an option that you choose. So for the ones listed within the town limits, they would have that turned to where no parties hosted here.
So I'm going to just fuss on this for another minute, though, because I guess it does just feel like there is subjectivity to this, correct? Because in the scenario I'm describing, right, if someone has six adults and kids and that's, and they're renting this, and they have friends and neighbors that they know of, and they're inviting them over, like, are they not in compliance if they do that? It's not, it's not a reoccurring party, it's literally they're renting it for the weekend because there's some big family event or something. They used to live here, they know a lot of people, they have people over. Like, is that considered outside the bounds of what we're expecting for this rental? And are they in violation of the rental?
I think that is a bit of an unusual situation, but I mean, if you were...
Seems plausible to me that that would happen.
If you are renting a port of, part of it out and you have an active rental period, then yeah, then potentially you could be in violation for that.
Hmm, okay. It feels subjective, the way we write that, that we just say no events. I don't know how other jurisdictions write it. I do get, I understand the spirit of what we're trying to say, but I think, I think there's a lot of subjectivity to that. And, and that would be on the zoning office, our zoning admins to make a call. Like, let's say the cops are called, that would be on our zoning folks to make a call and determine whether the primary owner was in, was out of compliance?
Well, you'd be looking at the operator there, but again, just on one event, it would be hard to figure out and go back. Again, that's how we're looking for, more on a recurring basis.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not done. Okay, and then...
On the border, Madam Vice Mayor, how much time are we giving?
Well, can we ask questions and get answers and...
Is that not what I'm doing?
Yeah, I know, but we keep asking for specific comments from the town staff, yeah, so, yeah.
This is the time to ask questions.
Can we, can we just not nitpick every answer? And, I mean, I understand what he's saying. If I'm renting my house and I have 300 people show up, the neighbors aren't going to be happy, so.
Yeah, that wasn't the scenario I gave, but okay. So my last question is related to the question or the, the letter we got from the realtors, and I just wanted you to comment on that, because it talks about, I just, maybe I don't fully comprehend what she was, what the realtors were concerned about, right? Because we're obviously saying we want a registry specific to the town, and are they saying they want to registry, hey, if we've already registered with the state, that's enough? Was that your understanding of that letter?
No. What the registry is, is when the state passed the legislation, it allowed each locality to have a short-term rental registry. And you, as locality, you can exercise where that's the only thing you adopt, but you can also have zoning regulations for any type of accessory use, just like we do for a home-based business, where you come in, there are standards for how many clients you can have, you come in and you get a permit for it. So it's pretty similar to that. You can have both, and the town is intending to do the short-term rental registry as well as the zoning provisions. I think Alexandria is the only locality that has only done the registry. All the other ones have adopted zoning regulations as well as the registry or in the process of doing that. So there is an option there where you could just only have the registry.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Councilmember Del Acula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very comprehensive, and looking at it now and also at the work session, this makes total sense. The only thing I wasn't clear on was the actual permit itself. I think it's a two-year permit, correct?
Yes.
So is that 200 per year or per permit?
Per permit, so it's essentially $100 a year, because it's 200 for the two years.
And that was established how, again, I forget what...
That's just the amount of time for staff to do the administrative review for it and a minimum of one inspection. We talked about this a little bit during some of the Planning Commission sessions. This is probably the closest reflection of actual staff time for these types of permits. We're looking at a larger overhaul of all of the zoning permits that'll probably come before the Town Council and the Planning Commission within the upcoming year.
Just don't sell yourself short, so if, it needs to be higher, by all means. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Friedrichs.
To just shift to another aspect of this, when we are doing inspections, or when you all are doing inspections, where do we get the criteria for these inspections? Are they similar to, is this a county thing, or what criteria do we use?
For initial inspections or with complaints?
I meant for initial inspections. You opened up a whole new can of worms there.
That's why it's specifically there in the ordinance that we say we're going to be doing an inspection and it will be part of that. So you get your authority for that from the zoning ordinance.
And, and the criteria, the nuts and bolts of the inspection, where, where do those come from?
Well, what they'll be looking for comes straight out of the ordinance. Again, so when they provide their plan for it, saying, your parking is going to be located here, that they're going to the site to actually verify, is this here, can it accommodate the vehicles? If they say they're going to be using it in a garage, go into the garage, see, can you actually put a car there? Those are the types of things that we would be looking for, really to verify what we've reviewed is actually corresponding to each other.
That makes sense, okay. I, I was thinking that maybe there was, the fire marshal had a, a list of things that you had to check off, but obviously the fire marshal is going to be checking those off, so.
Right, they're looking at different things than we are.
Thank you.
Councilmember McKenna, no, no questions? So I had a couple, but I do appreciate yourself and the director taking time to answer questions I had this afternoon. When will the violations take effect for failure to apply? When, after we pass the ordinance?
When, if the council adopts the ordinance tonight for the zoning ordinance, the effective date is listed as February 1st. So we're working with the Communications Department to get the word out to everyone who currently is operating a short-term rental, to get them to come into compliance. If somebody had started it, typically for anything similar to, again, if you started a home-based business and haven't registered, we notify you and you need to come in and get your permit. If not, then we go and pursue it as a violation.
Okay, thank you. Right, because I know we've had numerous complaints over the years, so we know that we have quite a few operating. In having a home-based business, I had to have someone come into my home and do the inspection. And you had a nice list, and I've had mine since, I guess, 2001 or 2, and you went through the list and asked me all the appropriate questions, so it's pretty painless, but the questions need to be asked. A couple of things, if anyone's read through, I was concerned about a few, I'll just mention those. We talked, when I called, I asked about recreational vehicles. That would be if you're parking one on your, your premises, with some neighborhoods you can do it, some you can't. You can't make that a rental, so that's why I was asking that question. So I appreciate your clearing that up, as well as accessory dwellings. I know even when I had my home inspection for the home-based business, they were asking me what we did in my shed. Other than the lawnmower, there's not really much going on. And the limitation on nights, so I appreciate that about the 90 days and unlimited for the Airbnb. So with that, this is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move passage of ordinance 19-0-43.
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember McKenna and second by Councilmember Del Acula. Do you have any comments?
I do, just briefly. I just want to thank staff for everything that they did on this in regards to some of the questions we had and making sure that they were shored up for tonight, so that was appreciated. The other thing, too, in regards to this matter, several things in regards to how this could shape the town, you know, obviously different, it's good that we have our own ordinance versus, say, the state, because Blacksburg, Virginia, on a Saturday for Virginia Tech Football is much different than a Saturday afternoon in Herndon, to be quite frank. The other things in regards to, we have been talking about affordable housing. If you have a single room you want to rent out, this might help defray some of that cost, so that could be some low-hanging fruit there. The other thing, the unintended consequence as well, is that since we have these parking ordinances and other things that we're putting in place, we'll be able to identify places that are, you know, not in compliance or they're breaking rules, and we can determine what that is based upon the fact that they have people living there that maybe shouldn't be. And that was a situation, when I was in my hometown, there was two family dwellings, and we passed an ordinance for something regarding housing, and the unintended consequence was identifying certain places based upon parking patterns. So I think overall, this is a very good thing, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Acula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I seconded Councilmember McKenna's motion, because I think this really does, and congratulations, it captures the essence or the spirit of what I think the town really wants as far as this ordinance. I think it certainly promotes and protects the things that we wanted to, so I'm completely in favor of this, so thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments? Well, I too am glad that we have come to this place. We were waiting on the state to do something, and now we've moved forward. But we have had issues in some of the neighborhoods, single-family home neighborhoods, where they were renting out to two and three different individuals, cars parking in the street, and it had become a problem for fire and rescue to even be able to come through the streets. So I think this is going to be a good way to protect our neighborhoods. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 6-1, or 6-0. And now our esteemed mayor will come back and join us. Thank you very much.
Welcome back. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, well done. Let me flip the page, Chair. Okay, the next item on our agenda is ordinance 19044 to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the town and Eldon Street Players. I'll open the public hearing and recognize Lisa Yates for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have before you this evening an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the town and the Eldon Street Players, otherwise known as Next Stop Theater, for space that they are currently using and have rented for a number of years at 750 Center Street, which is what we know as art space. The town is currently a party to a one-year lease with Eldon Street Players for that space. I believe they use it for storage only. The lease expires on December 31st of this year, and the rent for the space is currently and is proposed to remain $1 per term, $1 per year. And so the recommendation, staff recommendation, is that council approve this new one-year lease. It goes from month to month, can be terminated on a month's notice, and that would expire on December 31st, 2020. Answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Yates on this lease?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Same... Same as before, up to three minutes, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-44.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
No, ma'am.
All right. So with that, I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. We have a couple more leases to get to. The next item is ordinance 19-0-45, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the town and Arts Herndon Incorporated. I will open the public hearing and recognize, once again, our town attorney for the staff report.
Thank you. This is again another lease for 750 Center Street, but a different space within that building for Arts Herndon to lease. They have their offices there as well as a art space, and they have been renting that space now for a number of years. Before you this evening, based upon the request of council, are two alternative leases. One lease, alternative one, is to continue for another year until December 31st, 2020, at the current rate of $200 per month, which they have been paying for, again, as a number of years now, and it would be for a month-to-month basis for a maximum term of one year. Alternative two is to lease the space to Arts Herndon for $1 for the entire term, which would be for the year, for the month-to-month lease, terminating on December 31st, 2020. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions for the town attorney or staff? Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing, so I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question, or I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action, and when the motion is made, please indicate if you are moving alternative one or alternative two. Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-45 in accordance with alternate two, which is a $1 per lease term.
All right, we have a motion to approve the lease alternate two at $1 per year made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by Mr. Del Agula. Discussion on the motion, anyone?
The Arts Herndon is currently renting month-to-month, and they, I feel that they should be in accordance with all the other nonprofits and elected officials who are renting from the town.
Further discussion?
Ditto, I think it aligns with all the other nonprofits and electeds.
Other discussion?
Totally agree.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question made by Ms. Friedrichs for alternative two, and seconded by Mr. Del Agula. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. Next is an ordinance to approve and authorize a lease agreement between the town and our delegate Samira. I will open the public hearing and recognize the town attorney once again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you indicated, this is a lease for delegate Samira at the space at 397 Herndon Parkway. Currently, the delegate has a one-year lease that expires. He was, it was for his term, which will expire in December 31st of 2019. This new lease would be for, would run concurrently with his new term in the House of Delegates and would expire in December 31st, 2021. The rent for this space would be $1 per term, and that's consistent with office space for nonprofits at other space at 397 and at Town Hall. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, well, once again, this is a public hearing. I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council for discussion and action. Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-46 to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that motion carries. The next ordinance is to approve and authorize the signing of a lease agreement, a third lease agreement between the town and Events Analytics Incorporated. I'll open the public hearing and recognize Lisa Yates once again.
Thank you. Events Analytics has been in the space at 397 Herndon Parkway for a number of years now. They are current, we are currently a party to a lease that is a month-to-month lease. Events would like to continue that lease, however they continue leasing from us, they would like to reduce the square footage from 4,512 square feet to 3,512 square feet. The rent for this space would then reduce to $5,000 per month. It's currently 79, 17, 60. The recommendation is that the lease be approved and the mayor be authorized to sign.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town attorney? Okay, thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level once again for discussion and action. Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-47 to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a third lease amendment between the town and Events Analytics.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Yes.
I keep turning it off. So we had some discussion at the work session on the cost and the rental, and I think we all basically agreed that the cost was reasonable, and we liked to keep this customer in place, so that's why I support it.
Further discussion? Anyone? Okay, thank you. The motion was made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by Mr. McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. Next up is Resolution 19G71, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a second amendment to the pilot project agreement between Vivacity Networks LLC and the town. This is our smart cities project, so I'll open the public hearing and recognize Lisa Gates once more.
Thank you, Mayor. In June of 2018, the town entered into a pilot project agreement with Vivacity DC, now Vivacity Networks, to explore and evaluate the impact of smart city technologies and services through the installation of remote-controlled LED lights equipped with radio communications and an Internet of Things sensor equipment in downtown Herndon. Currently, approximately 90% of this has been completed and experienced by some who attended the Christmas tree lighting this weekend. However, due to unexpected project challenges, Vivacity requests extension of the agreement termination date from June 30th, 2021, to June 30th, to December 31st, 2021. They are currently installing the final item that will make it 100%, and that is the electric vehicle charging stations. So it makes sense, we believe, to extend that agreement an extra six months to allow the pilot project to run until December 31st, 2021. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions on this item? Anyone? Okay, once again, this is a public hearing, so I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to public, or to council level for discussion and action. Mr. Del Agula?
Madam Mayor.
I mean, I'm sorry, DeKalb. I apologize.
That's all right. Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 19Z71.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve made by Councilmember DeKalb and seconded by Councilmember Baker. Discussion on the motion, Mr. DeKalb.
Well, it's a pilot project. We have no fiscal impact, and I think this will be a great project to start with, so that's the reason why I support this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Very exciting, we're getting, people are very excited about this project, so I'm glad that it's working out so nicely. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. One final resolution, which is 19G72, to approve and authorize the signing of a lease, an amendment to the license agreement between Vivacity Networks LLC and the town, and I will open the public hearing and recognize Lisa Gates for the staff report.
Thank you. So in conjunction with the pilot project agreement, Vivacity Networks and the town entered into a license agreement to allow Vivacity to use designated public property in public right-of-way. This first amendment to this license will include the electric vehicle charging stations, which we previously discussed and depicted on a revised site plan, and associate additional network and electronic equipment that is necessary to operate the fiber, Wi-Fi, and smart city functionality, which will be located in the Herndon Municipal Center and the municipal parking lot off of Station and Lynn Streets. This will, as I said, complete the pilot project deliverables, and it will, the license, the amendment to the license agreement is necessary to authorize the location on town property. We would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing. I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. DeKalb?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Del Agula?
Oh, okay. Just so excited about this one. I move approval of Resolution 19G72.
All right, discussion on the motion. Did you already discuss? You're so excited.
In my, oh, we discussed it at the work session. I think this is certainly aligned with what we want as far as the town, where we want it to go, the image that we want to portray, and certainly protects us going forward in terms of the type of activities and things that we want to provide for people visiting the town, so I'm for it.
Other discussion?
Yes, I'm so excited about the Wi-Fi downtown and the charging station, so moving forward.
Mr. DeKalb?
I'm very excited for this one as well. Lots of people are already asking, you know, when we're going to have more charging stations as more and more people are adopting the electric vehicles, that is more financially and environmentally sustainable, so I think this is a great step, great pilot project to go from, so again, I support this.
Yes, I concur with my colleagues. This is very exciting, it's getting, we're getting a lot of good press out of it, and it's also just something that people are really excited about, so I'm glad that we're doing this, so I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, that motion carries. We have two general items. The first is Resolution 19G68, to authorize project administration agreements between the town and Fairfax County for the administration of Herndon Metro Rail Station Access Management Study Projects. This was continued from the council's November 12th meeting, and our deputy director of Public Works, John Irish, has come forward for the staff report. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. This is an agreement to follow on to a previous agreement the town council approved for what is called a Ham Sam Project, as we like to say, Herndon Metro Rail Station Access Management Study Project. This in particular is addressing two different elements of that. It is the cycle track or transportation multimodal improvement project on Herndon Parkway from the W&amp;O D Trail down toward the Fairbrook Drive intersection. And the second is for the same transportation multimodal improvements incorporated into the Van Buren Complete Streets Project, and these two are basically to authorize funding from the county for the construction of the previous design and study stages that were already approved. So the first for the cycle track is in the amount of $3,639,000. The second for the multimodal improvements as part of Van Buren Complete Streets is for $2.2 million. These were authorized by the Board of Supervisors at their last meeting, December 3rd of this year, and so this is just us needing to pass a resolution that will become a part of that agreement between the town and the county, and then we're all very good to go. Is there any other question?
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Irish? Mr. DeKalb?
Again, a great project. We have asked many questions already. Only question I have is, has anything changed from November 12th?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Irish? Anybody? All right. Thank you, sir. So I will move to council level and entertain a motion. Mr. McKenna?
Madam Mayor, I move passage of Resolution 19-G-68.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the vice mayor. Discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Just want to thank John Irish and staff for what you did. They were actually passing the ordinance, if not, or the resolution as we were having our work session, so way to stay on top of that, make sure we, what I call landing the plane, and make sure everything comes together, and you can't beat free money, so I'm all for it. So thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion?
Yes. So this was part of the presentation I did at the data meeting the other night, and I am so excited about this. I moved to Herndon because the metro was going to open in 2000, so I'm excited that we're finally getting to bus bays on Herndon Parkway. Thank you.
Exactly. This is a longstanding project agreement between the town and the county. There was a committee that met back in, I think it started in 2011 or '12. There was about $21 million earmarked in the Fairfax County budget over several years to pay for these trails and improvements for the Herndon Metro Station, so we love spending the county's money along with ours. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. Next up is a Resolution 19G73, to support RSTP and CMAC applications. Our transportation program manager, Mark Douceman, is unable to be here this evening, so I will call on Ms. Gilloran, our Director of Community Development, for that report.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. The resolution that you have before you this evening is to authorize the submittal of two applications to the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. These are funding applications, one for what we call RSTP, which is the Regional Surface Transportation Program, and one for CMAC, which is the congestion mitigation air quality. Now, in both cases, the funding will be for fiscal year 2026, so they program these funds quite a way it's out these days. The first one, the RSTP funding application, this is for East Eldon Street. We are going to be requesting an amount of $2.2 million, and you may be asking yourself the question, but I thought East Eldon Street was already covered. I thought we had adequate funding for that, and we did at one time, but due to construction increase, cost of construction and right-of-way, we now have a $4.4 million funding gap. Now, the staff has already submitted a revenue sharing application to cover that, but that's a 50-50 split, so 50% would be for the town to pay, and the other 50% would be the revenue sharing funds from VDOT, so it's a VDOT-Town combination. We'll learn whether or not we will be receiving those funds in March. Now, the RSTP application we'll learn about in February or March, if you do approve the resolution this evening, and if we do end up being successful in both applications, what we are going to be able to do is we're going to be able to offset that funding gap and decrease the town's obligation for that $2.2 million. So we will decrease the obligation, and that's going to save either tax dollars or save us bonding capacity. So that's the reason we're requesting that you authorize the request for RSTP funding application. Now, the second one, the CMAC, is for the intermodal access, the bus bays. You just heard about that, at the Herndon Metro, and this is along the Herndon Parkway, and it's, we call it bus bays, it's car bays and bus bays, relatively short, it's not a kiss-and-ride situation, it's a matter of being able to pull in and pull out to drop off passengers, to pick up passengers. Again, this funding will be in 2026, that's after the initial construction of the bus bays, which are timed to be closer to the opening of the metro. The amount is for $700,000, and the reason for that would be as the demand in that area of the metro increases, both pedestrian demand as well as vehicle, then we will be able to use this funding, if we're successful, with coming in and doing additional- to use this funding, if we're successful, with coming in and doing additional pedestrian enhancements and signalization. So this will be following the main part of the construction, and this is being used to replenish funds that we've had to transfer into the earlier part of the project due to, again, the increased cost of construction. So, we've had to reallocate those later funds to the early part, so this will replenish those if we're successful. And that is the summary. I know Mark was able to give you some additional information last week, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. And Jolly, who's been helping Mark with these applications in this resolution and staff report, is also here this evening to help if you have questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Yes.
So if I'm not mistaken, this resolution is asking us to let you get money for us?
Yes.
Okay.
We like other people's money. Any further questions for staff? Okay, thank you. So if there are no questions, I'll move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. DeKalb?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 19Z73.
All right, discussion on the motion. Mr. DeKalb?
Well, this is, both are great projects, projects, East Eldon Street widening as well as the bus bay project, and getting other people's money to do it is icing on the cake, so hopefully we can get it.
Ms. Friedrichs, followed by Mr. McKenna?
I agree.
I just want, I think the people at home need to, hopefully they realize, just this is an example of what the staff does, and we're looking at 2026 funds, and staff, people like Mark Deuceman, look into the future, understand how the funding of all these things work, and find ways to bring money to bear for our town. If you look at our fiscal budget, I believe it was, what, $54 million last year, and 2029 or so was actually realized through the town, so, meaning, there's other monies that come in, and it's through the diligent work of our staff, so we really truly appreciate it, and it's definitely a Christmas gift that keeps on giving, so BMAC is in favor of CMAC, so thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor? Anyone else?
So, this is an example-
We're almost done, guys.
This is an example how it takes a long time to get things done in our government, but we've been working on this. The first resolution was passed in 98, and then again in 14, since myself and the mayor have been on council, and now, once again, because it's a big deal to plan for a major thoroughfare like Eldon Street, and we've had other improvements along the way, so I'm excited about this, and also for the staff that is so dedicated in finding, funding for us to do these wonderful projects. Thank you.
Echo everything, I just, again, a shout-out to the staff, but really also to the predecessors of this council for having really that vision, hiring the staff, putting leadership in place that needed to be done. The result of this is, look, on the table tonight, we're just approving millions of dollars that we're capturing for the town, so thank you to everyone.
Exactly. It's very easy to support something like this, it is not very easy to get these funds lined up and together, so I'm sorry that Mr. Deuceman isn't here to hear how much we really understand the blood, sweat, and tears that goes into this, and there's deadlines and different funds for different, it's so complicated, I don't know how he keeps track of it, and I'm glad that you're on board to help out, because it's a big job, I think it's a two-person job, so, like I said, it's easy to support something like this, but we do recognize it's not easy to grab these funds. So if there's no further discussion, we will vote to accept some other people's money. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. We have, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is three appointments to individuals to boards and an award of contract. Is there a motion to approve?
Someone, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries, and that concludes not only our agenda, but our year, calendar year as a council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn for the remainder of the year.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? We stand adjourned at 8:35 PM. See you next year.